All right, I'd like to call this. All right, I'd like to call this May 2 work session to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campley?
Here.
Mr. Doerr?
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
Here.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Dr. Kohler?
Here.
Mrs. Mares?
Here.
Mr. Saylor?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Before we do pledge allegiance, I want to let everyone know that we are suspending Policy 006 today. We suspended it for the executive session and for the meeting. Mrs. Evans-Brockett is through Zoom, and we want to still allow voice votes. We don't have to do everything by a roll call unless we need to. And so if everyone can please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looking for a motion to approve the amended agenda with revision to the motion in Item 5.07 as noted. Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor say aye. Against, aye. The ayes have it.
Could I just note for the record that the reason for the amendment to 5.07 was due to the need to lock in interest rates for that subject financing. Pursuant to the sunshine law, we had to announce a reason why we're amending the agenda without the requisite notice.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone in the public that wishes to make a comment? Seeing none, and no comments on Zoom. So we'll go right into the special presentations. We have a special presentation on showcasing our students.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor, and I have the opportunity this evening to showcase some of what our students have accomplished this year. As we approached the beginning of the school year, we were thinking about, a lot about what we couldn't do and the considerations that we needed to make under the circumstances of the pandemic. However, as the year has progressed and we are rapidly approaching the end of the year, our students have accomplished quite a bit. So I just want to call out some of what's been done from the start of the year through now, and I'll move through some pictures and very brief descriptions very quickly, just to give you a sense at all levels what our students were able to accomplish this year. Remember Ida? She hit us in fall, and we had lots of students that supported a lot of cleanup that was necessary in our area. Viking pride immediately was nurtured as students were able to once again convene at football games and other sporting events, and that student section, which continues to support all of our sports, was in full gear. Student voice is something that we've been attempting to focus on more and more in past years, and this past fall, we invited student voice to participate with state representatives, Representative Penny Cook, Webster, and Cerisi, around policies that they believe impacted or impact their educational experiences. And we had middle school teams, we had high school teams, we had some Springfield teams that visited with us because those representatives overlap into Springfield, and afforded our students' voice around how they would propose some policies be revised in support of educational experiences, and they did a great job. That was back in the fall. We continue to focus on positive school-wide behaviors, positive behaviors in general, and some examples of what's called out for our students and the community service that they also complete and conduct for others in our community. That's a silver lining of this pandemic, really. Lots of people have stepped up, and nothing has been too much trouble in so many cases. Very appreciative of that. At Schwanxville, just a couple of quick little videos if I can show them without causing too much trouble here. Just going to give you a few seconds or so of each, a minute, but at Schwanxville Elementary Elementary Schools, we have a TV studio, and the students organize the morning bell, excuse me, on a regular basis. The fifth graders conduct and lead morning announcements. And here's an example of what that looks and sounds like.
Oh, hello, and welcome to the bell. My name is Cayman Scavetti.
My name is Lexi Cunningham, and today is Friday, October 1. And now here are Josh and Maryam with a pledge of allegiance and the school-wide pledge.
Thanks, Lexi. Attention all students and teachers.
Okay, so you get the idea, but we have our own students empowered to actually lead those activities in their buildings. It's not necessarily done by just the principals, and that's true at all levels. Students got right back into learning. These are some examples of science classes and what students are studying in different buildings at different grade levels, hands-on learning, future engineers, lots of engineering-related STEM-type activities happening in our schools at all different levels. And of course, in the fall, the pumpkin patch, which is very exciting for some of our youngest students. It came to us this year, as opposed to us going to it. Flux Space is a facility, an organization that exists in the Norristown area, and very innovative, high focus on engineering and how to do things differently in ways that support individuals being productive. We took some high school students there, and there's lots of talk about Flux Space in the educational world because of some of the work that's done there. Our students had an opportunity to participate in that. Robotics is getting bigger and bigger. It not only exists as part of a team here at the high school, but our middle school students have clubs for not only robotics, but Lego Mindstorm, where they construct these robotics, these pieces of equipment that actually they're able to program and get to do what they want them to do. Remember this picture? Augmented reality. Our students are extremely savvy. Then we had spelling bees. In the fall, we typically have some spelling bees. We actually had a sixth grader who won the spelling bee at East this year, and a sixth grader at West who went on to some higher-level competition and finished third or as runner-up. So, pretty impressive. In middle school, Family Consumer Science, our students modeled after a food truck, and they were assigned to bake some muffins and then come up with some of the other combination foods or drinks that would go along with their food truck. So they were thinking real-time. Food trucks are big in the minds of some, very popular, and they modeled after that. And then, of course, we have the heavy-duty math. We have actually a middle school math club where students actually want to come together and solve math problems, be challenged by solving math problems, and they really enjoy it. We have elementary school coding as well, so they're programming little devices and realizing some of the aspects of the language of coding at a very young age.
My name is Jennifer.
Hi, my name is Ava, and we are at Evergreen Elementary.
So we can't hear these young people too much, but...
We are with the crush, and we are going to program him to go on each individual's flight.
So we'll move on, but know that, sorry about that, that's happening at other levels. And then, of course, we always have some real standouts in the area of the arts, whether it's music or fine arts. And this is an example of some of what our students accomplished and were recognized for. We held concerts this year, and our kids were really excited about that. And as we've now moved into spring, they're able to do that without the masks and some of the considerations that needed to be made earlier in the year. We had an essay contest sponsored by Our Sinus College that some of our younger students participated in, and here is just a little clip of the high school spring. So, students are back at it and really enjoying it. There was a high school art contest earlier this year, and these are some of the winners. Middle school art contest, some of the winners here, and some of these you may have seen before. When our students were able to shift back into more of that social setting they look for in the cafeteria, they were really excited. And that transition went very smoothly. I'm very appreciative of the work of our principals, our custodial staff, in helping to facilitate that change, and the kids really appreciated it. We have therapy dogs that come and visit, and our students read to these dogs. It's a very unique opportunity that we actually began to participate in several years ago, but our students love reading to dogs. Sometimes students are a little shy about reading. They're not as comfortable to read with other students or even their teacher, and the dogs bring a level of comfort that maybe they hadn't experienced before, and we're appreciative of that. This is our robotics team, high school robotics team competed a couple of different times. They built 7414. They built that from the bottom up, and this robot has to complete certain tasks, one of which is picking up those balls, scooping them up, and getting them in the basket. Again, just a taste for you of someone that's been happy. Middle school jazz band, each winter headed into spring, there are jazz band competitions. Our students competed. West Jazz Band did really well. Lots of reading initiatives. So whether it's book fairs that are held, or reading Olympics competitions, or the focus on reading in classrooms, strong reading initiatives, and I'll show you a kindergartner reading in a minute, also writing. The Voice here at the high school received an award, a gold rating, for their work. Our students are still recognized by some of our partners out in the community. The Community Club of Collegeville recognizes fifth-grade students. Here's an example of recognizing some of the students at Skipback Elementary. Here's a Reading Olympics team, and then there's our North Montco Technical Career Center. And in this photo, you see students that are a part of the Health Occupations Students of America chapter, and some of what they did in their competitions, and really showcasing their skills in that venue. And then we also had a state skills competition, and these are some of the students, and there's a description there if you're interested, and how they did. So we had some students that really did well. This is an entrepreneurship team that was very successful in that competition. Empowerment Lab, there was a celebration, maybe two Mondays ago now, here in the high school. This is led by Dr. Bev Weinberg. Thank you. And Bev has, this is her second year working with us. She has two children in our district. She also focuses a lot of energy through a nonprofit, yeah, excuse me, a nonprofit, working with neurodiverse students. And what she does, and I love her philosophy, is she focuses on what kids can do as opposed to what they can't do. And a lot of times in our special education world, we sometimes struggle in focusing that way. She's shifting the view for us and really helping these students to showcase their skills, their talents, and what they can do. They develop a digital portfolio, and then they are ready for volunteerism and even employment in some cases. She does a great job working with us. Our students conducted a drone, they did some of the drone flying and captured some of the video that you may have viewed when we had the funeral for Trupar Siska, and they're doing lots of work under the leadership of Mr. Ganesh with drones. Again, very savvy with what they're able to do. We had our Envirothon team here at the high school compete, and Unified Sports, second year now that we've competed and participated in track and field, and these students do a great job. Very impressive. There's our own John Mares right there up front. The 200 Club Board recognizes students at the elementary level. These are some South students for some great behaviors, and this is positive reinforcement for those behaviors. Elementary art show, middle school art shows, and then the high school, which was up and running last week on an evening. If you had a chance to peruse some of what was displayed, very impressive, just gives you a sense of it. Mr. Seibel is not here tonight, but we had a couple of students from our high school musical that were invited to go to Broadway and actually sang on Broadway out there, up there in New York City, and really sounded fabulous. These clips are live. If you're interested, this one is slow to get started. However, if you have a few minutes and you're interested to listen, really impressive work, great performance. And our senior class was back in Disney this year and had a great time. Lots of thumbs up there. I'm sure our chaperones enjoyed the trip as well, but, you know, there's something for everyone in Disney, and we were glad to be able to sponsor that trip again and take our students this year. And then we had the prom. So we had more of a normal prom, or what's considered normal to our students. Lots of ideas have emerged after this year's prom, and some of what we've thought about in years past, and we'll be talking more about that. But the 2022 junior-senior prom took place, and students were safe and had a great time. And here are some of our student attendees, and if you've been following some of the pictures on Facebook, kids really look great. And from what I hear, had a wonderful time. And post-prom, I'd like to really thank the individuals that organized post-prom. There are a few community members that do a lot of work to support holding post-prom with the idea that they are providing a safe space for students who would still like to engage after the prom, the dance part of it ends, and they transform the high school into something that's really exciting and a lot of fun, lots of food, for students until 5:00 in the morning should they choose to stay. And here are some examples of what kids were doing. And finally, by the end of the year, one of our goals is to have our kindergarten students reading on or above that level we aim for. It's a D on the Fontes and Pennell system, and here's one of our little guys.
I didn't see, but the title is, again, I guess, Dad said one and two and three and James hid in the box. Dad said four and five and six. Nick hid on the chair.
So you get the idea. This is a major goal for our students in kindergarten, and then we focus on continuing to build that foundation through elementary school, advancing our students as readers, with, again, another goal of reading on or above grade level by third grade. We not only work to build the foundation in reading and English language arts, but also in mathematics, so that by the time our students get to high school, they're doing well and are future-ready for whatever choices they have or would like to make for after-high school. These are some of our merit scholars, some of the students that performed very well on some of the high-stakes testing they take, PSATs, SATs. And not to steal Dr. Moss's thunder, she likes to share with the individuals who attend graduation each year where our students are going, how many are attending where, the scholarship funds that they've earned or been awarded, as well as who's entering the military, as well as the workforce. This just gives you a sense of where some of our graduates are headed after high school, upon graduation. So we chose to use the map effect so as not to give away too much, because it's always really exciting to hear what our students have planned. These are some of the schools that you'll hear about. Very impressive on the part of our high school students. So, all in all, I think you'd have to talk to the students firsthand, but from the educator's point of view, there's been a lot that's been accomplished for our students, by our students, and we feel really good about that, and the way that the year is ending this year. So wishing all of them, those that are graduating in another couple weeks, the best, but we'll talk more about that. So that ends my presentation.
Thank you very much for that phenomenal report. We have the student liaison's report will be given by Mr. Schaefer tonight.
I have to follow that. Dr. Russell hit almost all of my points, but I still have two, so we probably should have planned that. But I will reiterate that prom and post-prom was a lot of fun. I had a lot of fun. I attended both, and they were phenomenally put on great events. Definitely a top night in my high school career. Christian obviously cannot be with us tonight. He fell ill in his AP Chem test today, but he did want me to tell you that there's an orchestra concert tomorrow and that everybody should attend. Speaking of APs, this week and next week is AP season, so our students are going through a lot of stress right now, but we're getting through, we're getting by, and finals are upon us right after AP season. And I will say that this Friday, our high school's Link Crew, which is a club where high school sophomores, juniors, and seniors, juniors and seniors, no sophomores, sorry, they join this club, and they welcome in incoming eighth graders. So this Friday, from both East and West, eighth graders will come to the high school, meet with our wonderful group of Link leaders, and they will give a brief tour of the high school, and then they'll just get to know some of the eighth graders, and we'll have a little party. It's just a great way to get, you know, high school kicked off for these incoming freshmen, and that's a great time. So I'm looking forward to that this Friday, and that ends my report. Thank you, Dr. Russell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schaefer. I have no president's report. Dr. Russell, do you have a superintendent's report?
I do, but it's very brief. So I had the opportunity to share lots tonight, so I just want to keep this very brief. I have three items. I want to recognize and celebrate some of the individuals that are a part of our organization. As Hallmark does, I want to update the board on the Path to Health and Wellness, that symposium that we've had organized, and then I just want to put out there the date for graduation. All of you are invited. So, very briefly, we have a lot going on. Yesterday was National Principals' Day, and I would like to sincerely express my thanks and appreciation for all that our principals do. We have a couple over here with us tonight, and their day never really ends, and they actually give it all to what they offer our students and our staff. So happy National Principals' Day. It fell on a Sunday this year. This is National Teacher Appreciation Week, actually. Tomorrow is the day. Dr. Parr did clarify that for me. It's actually a week. We're able to recognize our teachers, and I know our principals are doing some really nice things for our teachers in each of our buildings. To extend that thanks and appreciation, we also have Happy National School Nurses' Day, and our nurses have really been invested in lots of different work above and beyond what they normally do these past couple of years. Very appreciative for their work. And then it's also School Lunch Hero Day on May 6 this week. So we're very appreciative of our food service staff and all that they do to provide food for our students on a regular basis, and again, recognizing that through the course, over the course of this pandemic, that they have worked overtime and done a lot to go above and beyond and provide for our community as well as our students. So we would like to recognize them, each of these groups, for all that they do for our students. Thank you. So we've had this Path to Health and Wellness Symposium. We really wanted to make an effort to reach out to our community based on some of the feedback we received about our students during, as part of the PACE survey, some of what we're hearing from our counselors and social workers, and some of what we also are learning as administrators and teachers. And during Week 1, which was the week of April 18, we actually had the author of The Rabbit Effect, who talked about how kindness and a positive affect can actually influence one's health, and this is scientifically based. So she spoke. Each of these individuals that's represented in one of these blocks has spoken or will speak for less than an hour with an opportunity for some Q&amp;A, but concludes in about an hour. And we also had a presentation on social media that Dr. Parr put together to help us know the ins and outs of some of what our students are doing or our children are engaged in. And then we had an anti-bullying presentation. I really want to call this one out in particular, Thursday, the 20th. I am going to ask our administrative team to watch this one or listen to it. This one was very good. I thought this was very powerful and informative for us. Last week, we had a presentation by Be a Part of the Conversation, that's the name of the group, the organization, on cannabis. There's a lot of new information out there on marijuana, and we wanted to offer our community the opportunity to learn about that. Each of these has been recorded and is posted on our website. I've sort of pulled screenshots from where they are, but if you go to our homepage, you can get to any of these recordings, and they're less than an hour if you're interested. And this week, we've advertised that Upper Perk is also sponsoring a mock teen bedroom that is led by Be a Part of the Conversation, that group again that I just mentioned. Tomorrow evening, we have our very own SAP Team Representatives, Student Assistance Program Representatives from Creative Health Services, presenting on what is SAP and how can it help your child. And then on Wednesday, we have some basic information, signs and symptoms. signs and symptoms of anxiety and depression in our children being offered by an agency that we have connections to a partnership within the district. I want to call out our attendance, our participation hasn't been what we had hoped, a little bit low. We know that it's a very busy time of year, though. And we'll leave these recordings posted on our website in the hopes that we can nudge people to participate with them if they're interested. We are not going to hold the On-Site Resource Fair May 18th. We're going to move that presenter into the high school. Both middle schools will also hear from that presenter. And then we're going to demonstrate those vendors that were interested in being a part of it virtually on our website. So we'll push out the information that way. And then we have some ideas, Dr. Boyd and I, about the fall and what we might do at a time of year that might be more conducive to people participating. But it felt really good to get this off the ground, and I think we have something to build upon next year. And hopefully, individuals in our community will continue to gravitate towards some of this information if they're interested, if they have questions. That's what it's there for. And lastly, graduation is upon us. So once we get through May and we hit that first June meeting, you will be asked to approve the list of students who have met the graduation requirements to participate and graduate. And just some general information about that. All board members are invited to that. And this is a picture from a few years back of the graduation ceremony. Rain or shine, it will be held June 10th. Dr. Moss is faced with a snow day-type decision. If it's rainy, she's got to decide, are we going to hold out and hold it in the stadium? Or are we going to move it into the competition gym? There's an impact to doing that. But at any rate, it will be held June 10th, and hopefully, you'll be able to attend. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schubert, do you have a solicitor's report?
I have no report.
All right, then, thank you very much. Board members actively participate in many committees. Available minutes and notes of committee activities are on board docs. Do any board members have anything of note to report? Mr. Dorr?
So on April 21st, Safety and Operations met. We went through an ESCO update, which actually Mr. Weaver gave because Phil Maurer is unavailable. Went through the Capitol Projects, immediate needs being baseball fields at West, the pole barn, the tennis court status. We had an operations update, a safety update that involved the Raptor communication rollout. And the next meeting is on May 19th.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dorr. Anyone else? Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. Last Monday, Mr. Saylor, Dr. Kohler, and I joined with over 160 other school board directors, superintendents, and administrators at the state Capitol for an advocacy day. We spent the morning meeting with our state reps, Representative Penneychuk, Webster, and Cerisi, and then representatives from Senator Mench and Senator Ruth's office to call for increased investments in public education in the 2223 state budget, ask for mandate relief, and charter school funding reform. It was a great morning, and we have some very supportive legislators. In addition to that, I wanted to let everyone know that so far, 424 out of our 500 statewide school districts have passed a resolution calling on the General Assembly to pass charter funding reform. And there continues to be great revenue numbers in the state. So we're really hoping that this is the year that we get some increased funding for education.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans-Brockett. Any other board members? Dr. Campley and Mrs. Mares?
I can speak on the Education Committee. We met on April 27th. I won't go over too much just because we do have a presentation this evening, but there was a lot of discussion, looking at curriculum and some new courses that are coming, some discussion around what's included in Health and Wellness, what's going to be included in some of the social studies curriculum. And then I was really excited to hear that there is a potential of Pennsylvania Bilinguacy Seal that can be awarded to students for, if they demonstrate English proficiency as well as proficiency in another language. And that's something that's going to be talked about, hopefully, something that PV can partake in. And that was the Education Committee.
Thank you. April 20th, the North Monco Technical Career Center School Board, or School Board, Board met. And North Monco just had their first annual car show, which was a huge success, surpassed their expectations. And they're looking on building upon that next year. They raised money, and they're looking forward to moving that forward. Student recognition will be held at North Penn High School, June 1st, at 6:30 PM. And lastly, of note, it came up that, right now, North Monco has a waitlist of about 250 students who want access to programs at North Monco, but North Monco does not have the space nor the ability right now to offer them access to the programs. So the tech center and the board is talking about and starting to investigate ways to increase space physically, hopefully, and also just other creative ways to offer, ways to give students more access to those slots since there is a great interest in that. And that's...
Do we know how many PV students might be affected yet? Have they? Yeah, if that's something...
Yeah. I can certainly look into that and find that out and inform the board of where we stand in terms of our students that have applied or requested participation.
Any other board members? Okay. Items that represent standard routine business of the board are included in the consent agenda. Board members may request to have any items removed for discussion. The consent items as of May 2nd, 2022 are listed below. Additional agenda items may be added to consent during the work session meeting. The following items will be added to the consent agenda for approval at the May 9th, 2022 business meeting, 5.05, 7.01, 2, 3, 4, 5, 8.01, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And with that, education?
Thank you. 4.01 is the May education update. Is there a clicker after that?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith. We have an issue with the clicker, so give me the nod, and I'll advance for you.
I got it. You're my clicker.
Try to get the timing just right.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for a few minutes tonight. There are a couple of topics that we'll go over, some of our curriculum guides, a relook at our staffing and enrollments, some ESSER updates in regards to the arts and music departments. And then finally, we'll end with the instructional calendar. So starting with our curriculum guides, just a real brief overview of what our process is. We do develop the guides. It is a combination of teachers who teach the content along with curriculum supervisors, and we really look to those standards to guide us. And really, the guide is what is taught. During that time as well, we're also looking at professional development. We're looking at resources so that we can really be working on how it is taught, the best instructional practices and the best resources to implement that curriculum. We do then bring those items to the Education Committee. The curriculum guides come. Sometimes we are ready with the resources at the same time. Other times, they maybe come at a later date. We make a presentation to the Education Committee with the hopes for some discussion and some feedback that will give us some information into any revisions that we may need to make. We then bring those guides here to the school board for a presentation like I will do this evening. They are still in draft form, because again, we are looking for conversation and for feedback that we can then take over the next 30 days and if there's any revisions that we need to make. After they have sit in public for 30 days, then we would ask for your approval at the next board meeting, which is in June. Next slide. So I just want to also share with you, for those of you that have been on the board a while, these curriculum documents may look slightly different. We have been, over the years, changing what our format looks like, and now are fully using a understanding-by-design or what's called backwards design lesson plan, not lesson plan, but curriculum document here. And there are three stages there. The guides that we present to the board, the what is taught, is considered to be stage one, those desired results. And you can see all of the different areas, from standards to goals, enduring understandings, essential questions, knowledge and skills. Those are all the things that our teachers think about as we are planning what these units will look like. So the first course that I have for you, and I'm not going to read the slides there here as a reference for you and for the public. And of course, in the Education Committee slides, you will find much more information. But this is one of the courses, Geo-Civics. We have been reviewing the secondary social studies curriculums under Mrs. Folks' leadership in the past couple of years. You will recall last year approving the eighth and ninth grade social studies. Seventh grade took us a little bit longer. It is a combination of geography and civics. We have named that Geo-Civics. And you can see what that description of the course really is, active, responsible citizens, both nationally, locally, and globally as well. So combining geography with civics throughout that particular course to our seventh graders. On the next slide here, you will just see a very brief overview of the scope and sequence of this particular course. Each of the units that have been defined, starting with, you know, defining citizenship, all the way through what does global citizenship look like. And remember, these are guides in draft form, so that year-one of implementation is really important to us where we come back to these documents, and maybe we need to tweak the amount of time we thought would be spent, or we need to look for additional resources, or just really get feedback from the teachers as well. The next course is a new course. This is the Black History Course. This course was approved through program planning by the school board for creation of the course. If you remember, every year in about December, Dr. Moss and I do a presentation of any changes to program plan and of any new courses that teachers have expressed an interest in creating. This was one that the board did approve in December, and we have been working diligently then since that approval to create this particular course. So it really is a study of the Black experience in America. Again, you can read some of the other information there. I would just also like to point out that this is a new course, which means that it really is starting from scratch and creating what that looks like. We are very much open to feedback from our committee, from the board, from the public as well, wanting to make sure that we get this course to be just right. But I do appreciate the efforts on part of the staff to work on a brand-new course. On the next slide here, again, is the scope and sequence. And really, we were able to, you know, pull from multiple resources that we looked at, pull from experience of our teachers and our staff to generate what we hope to be an exciting experience for our students here, starting out really with creating a brave space in which we can have open conversations. And then you can see, leading through, it is really chronological in terms of the years and what the Black experience was during that time. And we have K-5 Library, another one. If you recall, last year, there were some changes in the elementary special areas courses, and library went from 30-day special to 15-day special. And we had presented to you a relatively refined curriculum last year for this year. And Mrs. Folks has been spending a significant amount of time with the librarians this year, really redesigning what that library program could look like. So we are bringing that back to you. You can see the goals on this slide. And then again, on the next slide is really the scope and sequence. And it really is similar for units, but a progression of skills in each particular grade level. And then the last one that we are presenting this month is the music, grade-five curriculum. Many years ago, we wrote the K-4 music curriculum, and fifth grade primarily was the choral program. And since the pandemic, we have revised that fifth-grade program. It certainly still is components of the choral program, but we have wanted to revise and bring up-to-date this curriculum. And so this one is also being presented. And the next slide has for you really, again, a scope and sequence. I would point out that the curriculum document for the music does look different than the design that you will see or the format of the three previous. And that is really because we wanted this one to mirror the existing K-4 curriculum documents for some flow in terms of the scope and sequence. But again, you can see the three main units that are there. So moving into staffing and enrollment, just an update. This is as of the end of April. Our kindergarten numbers are growing. So we were a little nervous a couple of months ago that the numbers seemed to be low, but we've had lots more registrations. And you can see, I'll point out particularly Schwanxville. We have typically ran four sections of kindergarten at Schwanxville, and next year, at least, will be the first in my time here that we will have five sections of kindergarten. So a larger number there. South is still hanging out around 60 at our lowest numbers, but we do anticipate that these will increase between now and August. And so this is really just that snapshot, again, of the elementary enrollment projections. So each month, I simply update the enrollment projections and roll the students over just to check if in any way our number of sections or homerooms in the elementary needs to change at all. And at this point in time, the only real change that you will note on here is that change to the kindergarten, increasing a section at Schwanxville to have five sections. But we were able to accommodate that within our current existing staff because we did have some flexibility with the K-plus program. So you can see we have K-plus continuing as well as we had that extra .5 position in there. In terms of middle school, we have also updated this. It looks relatively the same. Again, I will point out, however, we are watching the sixth-grade number at East. It is slowly growing by just a few students, maybe each month. So we'll keep an eye on that. That number still drives out an average class size of, you know, 25s or 26s. But we are just keeping an eye on that to see if that would grow at any point. But other than that, staffing really looks the same at the middle school as well. And then the high school, the numbers haven't changed significantly. And I know the high school's still working on what those schedules look like, but we're not anticipating any additional staffing needs there. So you've seen this slide before. These are the positions that you have approved. Mr. Moran has posted many of them, and we are starting to begin interviewing process for many of them. These are the 5.5. The next slide then again shows you in the chart that we've talked about this before. It's 5.5 new positions plus a .5 position from Viking Academy is really an add of six positions. But due to declining enrollment, we are able to reallocate four of those positions. So Mr. Weaver has reflected in the budget, an add of two positions. And then moving to ESSER updates. The board will recall, about a month ago, I guess it was, you approved the use of some ESSER funds for the fitness center at the high school. And at that time, we had some conversations about also expending some funds in the areas of the music and the arts, and how might we be able to support these particular areas, particularly in terms of how those benefit students' social, emotional, or mental health. And so you can see on the left is the overall allocation of $664,000 for social, emotional health and wellness, and how that has been broken out. And then on the right is that bottom $120,000 about how have we, ideas that we have come up with for that. And so we have identified, almost equivalent to what the high school fitness center, I think, came in around $46,000, about $50,000 that we would like to utilize for the arts. The next two slides then here will show you ideas. So Dr. Russell and I did meet with representatives from both the art and the music departments, K-12, and they shared with us many of the ideas. Again, I'm not going to read all of them, but you can see some exciting ones there, artists in residence. You will see some instruments for particular areas or upgrades to particular areas of the building. Library systems, flip forms, are those flexible? Where you stepped up, where you can, you know, do a choral performance, but they're flexible to be able to be used within our elementary program. And then you can see some things to our courtyard here at the high school, talking about murals and how can we have our students produce some of their own work and put that on the walls of our buildings, digital cameras, 3D printers, those types of things that can be used in art classes to allow students, again, to express themselves through art, through different mediums. So lots of ideas that we will go back and work with the teachers now to really narrow down, to be able to bring forth to you what it is that we would propose to utilize those funds on. And then the last piece, the exciting way to end here, is the instructional calendar. So we always have three snow days, inclement weather days, built into our calendar, of which we only use two this year. And one of them was due to the storm at the beginning of the year and the flooding. So we actually are able to officially announce that we would like to be changing the end of the school year. The last student day would no longer be the 15th, but would be the 14th. So this is just our announcement of that change. And so I can hear students yelling everywhere right now. So at this time, I will certainly entertain any questions you have, and I'd just point out Mrs. Folks is here as well, if there are questions regarding the curriculum documents as they are within her area of responsibility. Dr. Kohler?
Not really a question, but a comment, since there's quite a few items on the possibilities for using them funding for the arts, is that whatever doesn't get funded, maybe encourage some staff to apply for foundation grants, because a lot of these things may fit into that.
Absolutely, and we will certainly keep these lists for future things as well, or if there should be funds in some other, whether it's ESER or other avenues, absolutely. Thank you. Well, thank you very much for your time.
4.02 is the enrollment report. Mrs. Smith, is there anything to add? I know you covered that in your update.
Yes, I don't have anything to add on this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. 4.03 is the approval of summer 2022 enrichment camps. The motion is to approve an agreement with Flux to provide weekly summer enrichment camps for middle school students during the weeks of July 11, 18, 25, 2022, Monday to Thursday, at a cost of $4,200. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we can move that to consent. 4.04, approval of summer enrichment camps. Riverbend. Motion is to approve an agreement with Riverbend to provide weekly summer enrichment camps for middle school students during the weeks of July 11, 18, 25, 2022, Monday through Thursday, at a cost not to exceed $7,200. Are there any comments or questions?
What was the final cost for the student?
So right now, it's being proposed at $80. However, you know, maybe Mrs. Smith can elaborate. We did talk about this at Education Committee. If we don't fill all the seats, the cost can go up. And it was mentioned by Dr. Kohler at Education, maybe we open it up to others outside of our district if we end up with open seats. But right now, it's $80 per student to participate in this one.
I would just add that we initially, at Education Committee, I think, had presented $120 per student. That was based upon the minimum number of seats filling. And just based upon the feedback and trying to transition our families into that there may be costs associated with this, we did lower that, and we would pay any cost differential to fulfill the contract through the ESER funds that we have available.
Any other comments or questions? Move that to consent. 4.05 is the approval of Montgomery Virtual Program. Motion is to approve an agreement with Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to provide an online alternative educational service through the Montgomery Virtual Program, or MVP, as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we can move that to consent. 4.06 is the approval of program review for K-12 English Language Development Program. Motion is to approve an agreement with Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to conduct a program review of the district's K-12 English Language Development Program at a cost of $9,000. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we can move that to consent. 4.07, approval of Speech Language and Occupational Therapy Services Program Review. The motion is to approve the MCIU conducting a program review of speech language therapy and occupational therapy services. Are there any comments or questions? Go ahead.
Just wondering what the cost for that was? I didn't see that in here.
Yeah, my apologies. It's $3,900. And we can add that, excuse me.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, are we okay to move that to consent? And 4.08 is the approval of field trips. Motion to approve the following field trip, as reviewed and forwarded by building principals and district administration. It's the, it's next year's high school trip to Disney World. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent, and that ends my section.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doer, excuse me, Ms. Mares.
Thank you. 5.01 is the, I think Mr. Weaver is going to present a finance update.
Good evening, everybody. No clicker, right? Okay. So we have one item for tonight's meeting, and it's a pretty important one. It's preliminary general fund budget approval for 2022-23. You have seen this in the past, so we're just going to go forward and get this on the record. Dr. Russell, if you would go forward, I believe, nine slides. We will show you the changes to the revenues from the presentation from April. One more. Nope, keep on going. One more. There we go. Okay. So we have some changes to share with you tonight on the revenue side. The good thing is, is that there are no changes on the expenditure side, so just here's where all the action has been recently. So we had a couple of adjustments for the Special Education subsidy. We tied that out to the base, because what we budget and what the base actually becomes from the state, they adjust that figure for final numbers after they approve that, way after we approve the budget, way after the state year starts, the fiscal year starts, so we have to make an adjustment for that. We are adding for interest earnings. The Finance Committee and the School Board certainly has heard in the past that the Fed continues to increase those interest rates with little bumps of 15 points or 25 basis points. And as those continue to grow, we get the benefit of that, because we invest our monies where in our small areas that we can legally. And so those rates are starting to go up from a .15 to a .40. That doesn't sound like a lot, but that essentially is tripling the amount of interest earnings that we can show on a budgetary perspective. Mrs. Hurd and I continue to look at opportunities as well, and we do feel that the Fed will continue to, based upon the intelligence that's coming out and shared in the media, they will continue to increase that. Every time they do that, causes us pause for concern that we want to make sure that we capture some of that revenue moving forward, because that indicates that we will continue to garner additional interest earnings. So we'll show a little bit of that. We will continue to add for the earned income tax. I'm not going to belabor that one. We all know that we watch that one and monitor that one on a daily basis in the business office. Two other items that we'll show. The first is to show an actual growth from the equalized subsidy payment. This is the first time we're doing this at this point in time, and we base that upon an average increase that we reviewed in the Finance Committee. That average increase is a 2% increase. We do know and we do understand that the governor's budget proposal did come out for the equalized subsidy payment. That was well in excess of 20% increase for Perkehamon Valley School District. We do know, however, that that will not come to fruition. We all know that the state has $3 billion in the coffers, which is really unusual for the state to have those figures. So we feel fairly confident going out in the average that we're not overextending ourselves. You know that Amy and I are very conservative in our budgetary fiduciary responsibilities. We take that very serious. We're fairly confident with an average that we'll go forward, will recognize some of that revenue of $133,000 in this presentation for the ESBI. And likewise, similar setup for an average perspective for the Special Education subsidy as well. We feel that we're showing a little bit, but we still have some room that we can share. And if the state doesn't get their act together and doesn't take care of their business and provide a budget for us to consider before we get to final budget approval, that's okay, because ultimately, if they give us more money than what we budget for, that's what we're banking on. Those monies will ultimately come forward through the transactions next year, and then we'll have some more to talk about from a Finance Committee's perspective and a School Board perspective on how to utilize those excess revenues over our budget. So we are showing an additional $349,902, almost $350,000 in revenues in tonight's presentation. Dr. Russell? There are the totals. $116,687,404. That is a 2.4% growth. And again, you can see the average, some of the changes there, the averages that we use for the subsidy payment and the special education payment. Any questions on the revenues? We do break them down a little bit more. They're all in there. They have all been adjusted moving forward. The only item I can highlight on this, a local revenue stream, is the earned income tax. We have been watching that, and we have taken into consideration the fact that we've had some fairly large sums of money that people have paid for local earned income taxes based upon transactions that they've had in their life. And we've been warned and modified by Berkeimer Associates to just be careful, because those were one-time, very large hits that are influencing those figures moving forward. Dr. Russell, if you were to move forward. Again, there's all kinds of backup information there. When we get to the expenditures, again, there are no changes to the expenditures, so I believe if you go to Slide 31, that kind of summarizes everything. Again, broken down by major object code, as we have been doing. Oh, if you go back, there you go. Perfect, thank you. So the interactive tonight, which shows where we're at, the actual increase, tax increase as of tonight, is a 1.87% tax increase. That's broken down. You can see what we need to do to get us a little bit lower. We are continued to monitoring, we continue to monitor various sources associated with the expenditures, most likely cybersecurity insurance. Mr. Ganesh and I, we do have a follow-up meeting with our Willis, which is our insurance broker, on that, because the insurance market is responding. We did fill out the 87-page questionnaire, and they wanted some more information. So Mr. Ganesh has responded to that information, and we're waiting for them to get back to us. So we might have a small uptick on that. And I will also mention that the Buxmont Insurance Consortium came through, and they are going out, they have recommended in our third look, a .12% increase. So we are at a 0% increase. We feel confident with that. Remember, the last time we talked about this at this setting, it was a negative 5%. So we took a cautious approach to that, and sure enough, it rebounded, because they had another couple of months' worth of activity that changed that figure. So at a 0%, we're comfortable. The third look is our final look, so we do know that that number, while it's fairly large, it's a $10 million figure, we do know that that's set now, moving forward. Any questions on that from a board perspective? This also recommends the use of $1 million in unassigned fund balance. We did talk about that in the Finance Committee, and we did bring that forward for motion tonight, so that has a question mark there. But the assumption is, is that with the recommendation of the Finance Committee that that would pass, that comes into that 1.87% increase. Any questions? Okay, as a tie-in to that, utilizing $1 million of fund balance, you're looking at the projection that Mrs. Hurd and I produce on a yearly basis. We track it once we set it out on a weekly basis. Our estimate is that our unassigned fund balance will end at $8.6 million, a slight decline. Remember, we had planned to utilize $1.5 billion of that as part of our final settlement for 2022. So the fact, the mere fact that we're only dropping by 700-some-odd thousand dollars is a positive. So if we do use $1 million, that will leave us with an estimated fund balance of $7.6 million, only in the unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2023. That's the assumption that all of our budgetary numbers are exactly correct. We all know that we're very conservative in the business office, so our expenditures and our revenues, we try to take the data that we're provided and to make solid movements in those, so we feel fairly confident with that figure, that that figure will be slightly improved at the end of 2023, all things considered. Couple of things to think and remember about tonight, mainly in the red area. Again, we've shown the ESBI and the Special Education average increases. That's our hedge. That's about as excited as we get for showing our hedge there on the revenue side. And just to reiterate, when the state does finally get to their portion of their commitment, which is the finalization of the state budget, whenever that is, if they do give us more, that will help us at the end to resupply and replenish our unassigned fund balance as of June 2023. It is a wise strategy that we've developed over the years, and the board has been flexible enough with us over the years to allow us to do that. So we've checked off the first goal a couple of months ago to get to the Act I index. The state budget passage is a big question mark, but now we've hedged. We know where we're at. And June 13 is our final budget approval. And we'll continue to work to massage the revenues, lower our expenditures, and seek other alternative areas. Any questions? Again, a 1.87% is what you should take from this presentation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. 5.02 is grants and donations. We have a few grants and donations. A Kindness Rock Garden, provided by PV Foundation to Schwanxville, the amount of $460 to promote positivity and kindness. The Mega Chest Set, provided by the PV Foundation to the high school, $400. High school and district activity and outdoor equipment, again, provided by the PV Foundation to Middle School West, at a tune of $500 for equipment for recess and outdoor areas. 5.03, the recommended action is to approve a settlement agreement and release in lieu of FAP, as recommended by the solicitor. Are there any questions? We can move that to consent. 5.04, recommended actions to approve a settlement agreement and a release in lieu of FAP, as recommended by the solicitor. Any questions? Move that to consent, please. 5.05 is on consent, to approve the depositories as listed for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. 5.06 is the recommended actions to approve the 2022-2023 Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Intergovernmental Agreement for Shared Student Services. Are there any questions? We can move that to consent, please. 5.07, we are actually, this is a motion tonight that we're going to talk about and vote on. So the motion is to approve the terms and conditions of a certain financing proposal by Unives Capital Incorporated relating to the previously approved purchase of Lenovo Chromebooks from Troxel Communications and Vivacity Tech PBC pursuant to the PEPM Technology Purchasing Cooperative on a tax-exempt basis in the amount of $268,884. I so move.
Second.
Are there any questions?
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay.
Nay.
Ms. Abbott?
5.08, the recommended action will be to approve the purchase of the high school library furniture as listed, utilizing the MCIU Furniture Purchasing Agreement. Are there any questions? Please move that to consent. 5.09, the recommended action will be to approve the purchase of the high school library and Room 21 classroom furniture as listed, utilizing the MCIU Furniture Purchasing Agreement. Are there any questions? Please move that to consent. 5.10, the recommended action will be to approve Land Grant Surveyors LLC to provide a topographical survey for the grounds building at a cost not to exceed $4,500. Any?
Is this the football field?
This is the grounds.
The grounds, the...
Where it's being moved? Yeah.
It's adjacent to the softball field.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, can we move that to consent? 5.11, the recommended action will be to approve Windview Athletic Fields to repair four athletic fields at Middle School West at a total cost not to exceed $36,000. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I want to take this off consent and talk, like, I'd like this to talk about this for, at the meeting next week. Not doing it, but talking about it, like, for instance, today, fields were closed on a beautiful day. I know we got rained over the weekend, but there's no reason for fields to be closed, so I would like to see why we're deciding to go with this company. Have we used this company in the past? What's their livelihood of what they're doing to work and things like that? We need to ensure that when we're spending money, that these things add up, that on a 70-degree day, our fields are open and available.
If it would be helpful, Mr. Saylor, Mr. Weaver and I can prepare responses to some of those questions in the weekly communication, too, so that you would have it in advance. We'll work on that.
Sure. Again, not taking it off, because we don't want to do it, just, yeah.
So, Mr. Saylor, are there any other questions you have? Because the purpose of tonight's meeting is to ask all those questions, so that next week we can vote. So if administration, if you have anything else you'd like administration to answer?
Is there anyone here who can answer the questions that I have?
No, I'm saying so that they have that information for us, because you said to discuss it next week. I'm just saying, if there were any other questions you had prior to next week. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
What is the 36, what's going to happen with the $36,000? What specifically are they doing to the fields?
So the attachment states, essentially what they're going to do is they're going to redo the infield soil, and they're going to add soil mainly, and then they're going to cut and remove and flatten the lips outside of the infield, which is, you cut the sod, you cut the grass, and you make it level, laser grade it, and then put the sod back down. Newer sod back down.
How big are the fields?
Excuse me?
How big are the fields?
These fields are regular-sized fields.
59, 60, 90? Or is it just the fields at West?
Yeah, these are eighth and seventh-grade baseball and softball fields.
Wasn't that area that they were talking about doing that, wasn't it just a 12-foot area? Is that correct, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, 10 to 12-foot area from a foot or two inside the infield and out into the grass field.
Were there other proposals?
There was not. This is through Co-Stars. This is through Co-Stars.
Well, I just want to note that Co-Stars does have multiple vendors. I'm not sure if you looked at multiple vendors. Co-Stars is State Bidding Cooperative. It does have multiple vendors for various contracts.
Yes. This is not, this is not, this is not a regular landscape kind of thing. This is a specialty kind of group that needs to be able to do this, these athletic fields. I do know Mr. Fabrizio did look into that and this was the one that he researched and brought forward.
So, Mr. Saylor, I had a question based on your question. Is this the same company we used for the fields at main campus? Because to your point, they were closed today because of yesterday's rain, I assume.
No, this is not, this is not the same group.
And so, this document that's on Board Docs, and I want to say this because I have a lot of process with doing this in my other volunteer job that I have, doesn't say much with what we're getting with the $36,000. It doesn't say what type of infield dirt's being used, what type of layers are being put on the field. It just seems like, and a lot of money for what they're suggesting that they're going to do. And so, for instance, depending on what your water issues are, it's not just regrading the infield, it's regrading the outfield. It's then creating a lip in the infield where the water goes to one certain reservoir area that could be taken out by, you know, some type of suction device or device that takes water off the field. Depending on how deep you go into the infield in terms of what type of infield dirt you're putting on and what type of layering you're putting in between the layers of dirt, it just, it doesn't say much. And that's why I wanted to wait and just ask some questions. Just looking at this document, it doesn't say what we're getting for $36,000.
Okay, we can, we can be prepared and make sure that we provide that information to the school board.
So, the first part of my question, it's not really a question, it's more of a statement, but it were a request. Is it possible then for Mr. Saylor to work with the athletic department and also Mr. Fabrizio to use his expertise to help formulate and verify the scope of work within the fields, not just for this field's work, but just overall our general maintenance for the field so we can correct the problem? Maybe we can bring that portion of it to safety and operations. The second part of my question slash comment is, I know we had pretty extensive conversation about the tennis courts and their fencing issues, and I don't see that on the agenda for this evening.
So, the fencing was done as a repair, as a normal repair. It was only $4,000 to repair all of the tennis courts down there. And it was slightly less than $1,800 to fix the gates and that kind of stuff up at West as well. So, we handled that internally out of the operations budget as a normal repair.
Okay, great, I appreciate that. I saw that it was taken care of. I just didn't know if there was a larger scope that we should be really looking to approve, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll send questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. That will not be on consent. 5.12. The recommended action will be to approve the student all sports insurance program for the 2022, 20, I think it should say 23, school year with Access Insurance Company as planned by CBiz Benefits and Insurance Services at a total cost to the district of $10,047. Are there any questions? Seeing none, please move that to consent.
Mrs. Mayers, I'm sorry. Please leave this one off consent. We have been asked to follow up with the All Sports Insurance Company to ensure that bowling, unified sports, and competitive cheering is part of this. I have reached out to the insurance company. I've not heard back from them yet on that to see if there will be an increase, but the insurance company is aware that we have questions about that. So, please leave it off and we'll figure it out on the week.
Okay, thank you. So, that'll stay off consent. 5.13. The recommended action will be to approve the voluntary school student, oh wait, I just did that, sorry. Right? Didn't I do? Yeah. Oh, I was, okay, sorry, my computer is going slowly then. The recommended action will be to approve the voluntary school student accident insurance program. So, that, I've read it, we're not going to put it on. There's two? They're reading the same to me. Okay, I'll just keep reading, sorry. Voluntary school student accident insurance program for the 2022-2023 school year with Access Insurance Company as planned by CBiz Benefits and Insurance Services at no cost to the district as recommended by the finance committee. Are there any questions? Please move that to consent. 5.14. The recommended action will be to approve the use of $1 million in unassigned fund balance to help offset the 2022-2023 general fund budget as recommended by the finance committee. Are there any questions? Move that to consent. 5.15. The recommended action will be to approve the proposed final general fund budget for 2022-2023. This rate represents an increase of 1.87% over the 2021-2022 tax rate. Are there any questions? So, we can move that to consent. That ends my section. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Payment of bills, Mr. Dorr?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. Section 6.01, Ratification of Bills and Payroll and Authorization of Payments. Motion to ratify the payment of bills and payroll as per the list submitted for the period ending April 30, 2022, and to authorize the payment of bills on the check and voucher registers submitted for May. Questions? We'll move that to consent. 6.02. Motion to approve the treasurer's report and financial statements, including summary of cash and investment accounts as prepared by the administration for the period ending April 30, 2022. Any questions? Okay, move to consent. That ends my section.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dorr. I'm sorry.
We don't have the document yet.
6.01, 6.02, yeah. We're not giving you the payment of bills section again. Professional personnel, Dr. Campley.
Okay, professional personnel, 7.01, 2, 3, 4, and 5 are all on consent. 7.06 is a placeholder. That ends my section.
Thank you, Dr. Campley. Support personnel, Mr. Keenan.
All right, we have section 8.01, 8.02, 8.03, 8.04, and 8.05 are all on consent. And that ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Dr. Kohler, if you could get that section done quicker?
I'll do if I missed. Section 9, Governance, 9.01 is the first reading on policies. The following policies are presented for first reading. 2.18, Student Discipline. 220, Student Expression and Distribution of Posting Materials. 227, Controlled Substances Paraphernalia. 237, Electronic Devices. And 808, Food Services. Any comments or discussion? Okay, so we'll move those to a second reading. 9.02 is a motion to hold a second reading and adopt the following policies. 004.1, Student Membership. 232, Participation in School Governance. 605, Tax Levy. And 800, Records Management. Any comments or questions? Move that to consent. 9.03. The recommended action will be to appoint Amy Hurd as Board Treasurer for a one-year term from July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023. Any comments or questions? Move that to consent. 9.04. The recommended action will be a motion to ratify an exception to Policy 202, Eligibility of Non-Resident Students to Allow Students to Continue Attending South Elementary from May 1, 2022 through the end of the 2021-2022 school year as a non-resident student beyond the 20 days prior to the last day of school as indicated in policy. Any comments or questions? Move to consent. 9.05. The recommended action will be a motion to ratify an exception to Policy 202, Eligibility of Non-Resident Students to Allow Students to Continue Attending Schwenksville Elementary from May 1, 2022 through the end of the 2021-22 school year as a non-resident student beyond the 20 days prior to the last day of school as indicated in policy. Comments or questions? Move to consent. 9.06 will be a motion to ratify an exception to Policy 202, Eligibility of Non-Resident Students to Allow Students to Be Re-enrolled in Perkyomen Valley High School as a temporary non-resident student beginning April 25, 2022 until they settle on their home in May. Any comments or questions? We'll move that to consent, and that concludes section 9.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none in person? Seeing none on Zoom? Comments from board members? Dr. Kohler, Mr. Fountain, Ms. White, Dr. Campley, Mr. Dorr, Mr. Keenan, Ms. Mayers?
I just want to reiterate, because I had the benefit of being able to witness some of prom and post-prom, and just again, another huge shout-out to the volunteers that all they did, the security, the custodial staff, the teachers, everybody, just a phenomenal experience. Thank you.
Dr. Russell?
No, thank you.
I have nothing as well, but I will give everyone a notice of a video recording disclaimer, and please ask it to read. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sarah Evans-Brockett, Ms. Brockett, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I did want to make a comment that I've had the privilege last week of attending many of our high school musical events, starting on Tuesday with the High School Spring Band Concert, which included wind ensemble, jazz band, and concert band. And then Wednesday night, there was a preview night for the indoor percussion and guard prior to them traveling for a long weekend to Wildwood for the TIA Championships, where indoor guard made the semifinals and indoor percussion placed third. If you weren't able to make it to any of these, as Mr. Schaefer said, there is the Spring Orchestra Concert coming up tomorrow night, there's a Spring Choir Concert coming up May 11th, followed by several jazz band things going on at the Reading Phillies Festivals, that kind of thing. And I just want to share something that Mr. Oberholzer said at the preview on Wednesday, and I know I'm not going to say it quite as eloquently as he did, but I hope I can get the point across. These music programs are a true show of what we need as a community. They are all about bringing people together. There's no competitiveness, and everyone cheers and encourages each other. There's a true appreciation for skill and talent. At this preview, Norristown's indoor guard came out to support, and Pen Ridge's indoor percussion came out to support and gave our students a great send-off. We have extremely, extremely talented students, but our numbers of participants in these programs have been decreasing. So, we need to make sure we're continuing to support these students instructionally and with funding. I'm happy to see some of the ideas of how to use Esr Funding, and I'm looking forward to seeing how that gets allocated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans-Brockett. 10.03, Notice of the Video Recording Disclaimer. You may read it for yourself. I'll rule this meeting adjourned and just let everyone know that prior to the board meeting, an executive session was held for the purpose of legal and business.
Litigation and personnel.
Yeah, litigation and personnel. Go, sisters.